And two republic, or which is saints, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She would be to turn on the speaker there, like a phone on the...
Green button.
Hit the bottom, bottom, green button.
Hit the bottom red button.
Nope.
The red and the top.
I don't know.
So, welcome. City council meeting, Tuesday, June 13th, 2017, 7 o'clock. And we'll have the clerk read the meeting policy.
The agenda as printed or amended will be followed so as all necessary and needed actions by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion for discussion items only. Business from the floor is welcome and is allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, you must first be recognized by the mayor, second, state your name and address for the record, and third, you will have no more than three minutes to state your comment or concern. Copies of the agenda are available on the back table. Please sign in and turn cell phones off.
Thank you. And I'll ask for an approval or amendment to the meeting agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Angel.
If there are no changes from other council members, I move the agenda as printed.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? For those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We start with a public comment session. Anybody here to address the storm water pollution prevention program? Point once, point twice. All right. Maybe just as easy as we thought it would be.
How is this?
Let's hope there's no storms tonight to have people come in tomorrow saying, "What's with these stormwater ponds?" All right, then Lieutenant Heath share the sheriff's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, good evening, city council, city employees, citizens of Nowland. Just an update for the month of May, the sheriff's report. We responded to 117 calls for service in the city during the month. And before the meeting, Mayor, you had asked me a question just about the report that you guys get is not a sampling of every call for service that we get. What we've done is taken out usually the most important calls that our average council likes to see throughout all of our contracts. So we have one report that we send out to all contracts. And it's not every single calls for service type. So there's a lot of different calls for service type that you don't see on here. But these are the main ones that throughout our history with doing contract work that the city councils that we've served have wanted to see. So that's kind of how that list came to be. Those are the major ones. So there's... We also have a list that our staff works from to develop this that shows all of the calls for service. And they can vary greatly, anywhere from phone calls to follow up on different cases and stuff like that that people are calling for. There's just too many to list on the reports. So that would make sense to everybody. When I look at it, I have to sit for, you know, with a ruler and make marks to follow it all just because there's so much of it. So that's why we've pared it down for this.
It'd be interesting at least sometime during the year. I don't know. Again, there's so many to go through. But, you know, so far this year, in five months, we've had 500 calls for service. And it used to be a listing for radio calls and a listing for calls for service. And, you know, if you take a look, there's 36 items that have been delineated here. So you wonder what the other, you know, 80 items are that, you know, what type of things or what categories they make up. So just, you know, at your convenience, or if they do this already, if there's something that at some point we could get just a summation of what types of things those are. Because again, if this is a quarter of what the calls are, these are significant. But we pay, our contract is partly based on calls for service. So if there's something we can do as a city in our newsletter and our communication or Facebook, saying, "Here's some things you might call the sheriff about that they don't have to deal with." We can deal with them on the city or neighbor to neighbor or, you know, something we can do to be more helpful without putting a big burden on the sheriff's department to say every month you have to break out 120 calls. Something to help us look for trends and improvements.
What I'll do is I'll go back and I'll try to find, you know, there's a... I'll talk with the staff that actually pull the reports and do that. I don't want to comment for them on how easy it may or may not be. I don't want to... So what I'll do is I'll find an answer and some possible things that we could do to maybe deliver that information. And then I'll bring that.
I thought with our new software system in place, it'd just be like that, so...
I think we've spoken quite a bit at these meetings about that software system and we're...
Not nearly as much as I do at the fire meetings.
Well, I... Yes. So I'll come back to you with some ideas on things we can do to make it easier for the council to see.
Thank you.
Yep. And just to, I wanted to point out a few calls for service I thought for the month that were important. You know, from time to time, I hear, and not from the city here, but I hear even officers that I work with in other agencies, they don't think that our contract deputies, you know, have the same personal investment and get that same knowledge of a city because they don't live here and they don't work here every single day. But there was a couple, there was a couple of incidents this month that I really wanted to highlight that shows that, you know, we are your police department. And whether it looks different than other agencies do or other cities do for their policing, I think the citizens get a very good product from us and we have people that are truly invested in this community. And one of the deputies that I wanted to point out, he's come here two years now with me. His name is Deputy O'Connor. And he's very proactive and he works this area because he really likes it. And just, you know, the other morning, he was on routine patrol here in town at, and this is about 1:30 in the morning. And he knows a couple of areas that are a little bit troublesome. And he was sitting in one of those areas just waiting to see what he could find. And sure enough, a vehicle comes driving down a public street at 1:30 in the morning with no headlights on. And he stopped the vehicle. And then, based on what he knows of specific people in this area, started asking questions. And ultimately, he got a canine out here and they did a narcotic sniff of the vehicle based on what the deputy was able to see. And sure enough, he had, the driver had narcotics on him and he was in possession of multiple hypodermic needles and things like that. I know that's a problem for the community that we have people that are using here. But I want to highlight to the council and to the citizens that we do have, you know, our staff is truly invested on, in what goes on in the city and does take pride in being able to find people like that that are coming here and causing problems. And it wasn't a citizen of Nowland. It was somebody from out of town.
But we assume that.
But I like to highlight those things so everybody understands that, you know, even at 1:30 in the morning, you know, we have people that are truly making that investment to, "I think there could be some bad things happening in this area, so I'm going to be here to see what I can do." And the deputy was very successful, you know.
And I, you know, again, I've heard excellent reports from residents who've had interaction. And even when they're not on patrol in our area. We had a neighbor that had a medical emergency and a car from Andover and the county car showed up before the rescue squad. So, you know, we get the 24-hour response as well as the coverage, as you say, so...
So we're very fortunate. And I'm really glad I've been able to see that we've got people that take a serious interest in the community. And that's helpful for me as well, working with you guys to develop that. And a few other noteworthy calls for service during the month. We had a deputy respond to a suspicious vehicle call here in the 201-600 block of Nowland Boulevard. And it was very nice for us. A citizen reported some suspicious activity in a vehicle. And the deputy got there. And between the deputy and the citizen, they were able to find the vehicle. And it turns out that it was a stolen vehicle from a burglary in another area of Nowland that had not even been discovered yet. So the actions of a citizen calling us, seeing something out of place, they were able to put that together. And the vehicle had been stolen from a burglary that hadn't even been discovered by the homeowner yet. So it was kind of one of those nice things. It was a... And quite honestly, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have been able to do our job had that citizen not taken the time to call. So very nice thing for them to do. And then, just a, another kind of an interesting incident. We talked about some of the traffic issues that we have. And this is another, this is a 2:30 in the morning case. On the 23rd of May, one of our deputies stopped a suspected impaired driver out on St. Francis Boulevard in the 20100 block. And the driver was ultimately arrested for DUI and for outstanding warrants. Again, not a citizen of Nowland, but traveling through at 2:30 in the morning. And while they were doing a search of the vehicle, they also found a large amount of synthetic marijuana that was in the vehicle. So the driver was subsequently arrested for the DWI and warrants as well as the controlled substance crimes. So kind of a little bit concerning to see a lot of the drug activity. But what I can tell you is the city of Nowland isn't alone. The drugs are a problem in all the communities we serve and pretty much communities everywhere.
Are you seeing an increase across the county? Or consistent?
What I would say, there is an increase, especially, you know, in the last several years opioids and heroin have really dominated the media. But I just received a call the other day from a media outlet wanting to talk about the resurgence of methamphetamine. And like I explained to the reporter, methamphetamine never went away. It just got, it got to play second fiddle to heroin because of all the problems. And heroin is very bad and all the opioids, those are very bad and they're causing lots of problems for community, but for our communities. But methamphetamine is truly our most impactful narcotic here in this county. And as the commander of our drug task force in Anoka County, I can tell you from personal experience there that if people don't think that the cartels from Mexico are very active in and around Anoka County, they're mistaken. We have investigations that routinely deal with the drug cartels from Mexico who are bringing a very large amount of narcotics into this country and into Minneapolis and Anoka County. Minneapolis has actually taken over as one of the hubs in the nation for methamphetamine distribution. So we are seeing an increase and the prices are also going down. So that's a problem in all factors for us. And continues to affect our communities in a very bad way. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for the lieutenant? No? Thank you very much. We appreciate the proactive service.
It's just, it's nice to be able to report those things to the council so everybody sees it.
All right. All right, you have floor items there? Nothing? All right, move on to planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Motion to approve the request for the variances recommended by the planning and zoning commission for the Hubbard property.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
I'd like to make a motion to table the issuance of the conditional use permits for Grant Radamacher until the required documents requested by the Anoka County have been provided to the planning and zoning commission for additional review and recommendation.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make the council aware, if you're not already aware, that the city did receive a review letter from the Anoka County Highway Department dated June 12th.
And I believe everybody got that yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
And I think that's probably why, is to go back to planning and zoning. The turn lane that was referenced in there, I would assume, would be on the property, on the city property or in the shoulder in front of the city property leading into the new driveway, right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Because there is a turn lane already.
The, I actually measured the shoulder just before the meeting. The shoulder width is about 10 and 1/2 feet now. So to accommodate a 12-foot wide turn lane, you know, they're, it'd be widened approximately two feet.
The city could make out really good on this then. County's going to buy that property?
It's actually not the city's property. It would be county right of way.
Anyway. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I think legally, the PNC has made their decision and forwarded to the council and you can't... A public hearing is done and they made their decision, a recommendation to the city council, and we need to make a decision. You can't send it back for a new public hearing and for a second decision. That wouldn't be the right way. That wouldn't be due process. I think we need to move forward with, I mean, we could table and ask for more information for us. I believe we have that information now. And that's what PNC's recommendation was. But this item should not be sent back to PNC for a second approval for these conditional use permits for grannies. We need to make a decision at this point.
I, you know, I wasn't hearing it going back for another public hearing. Your request was just to have them review the additional documents that they didn't have? Is that what I heard?
Right, back to the planning and zoning for additional review and recommendation. I know there was a lot of questions at planning and zoning about what, and a lot of what-ifs about how to handle, especially the corner where the entrance from the city property and the findings from the county.
Other discussion?
I guess, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Without the, knowing that the county wants the, is still, is looking for drainage calculations and the other items mentioned in the memo, can we, can we move forward without that information?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
The county normally reviews that after this would be approved. And then as we're going through the design of the project, that's information would be submitted to the county before they get their permit to proceed with the construction. So that's not a problem. That's never been done before, to have all that, all the drainage calculations and done for the county right of way before we would approve conditional use permit. That's a county process.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rickert? I guess, yeah. The only, I'm all for, you know, going ahead with this. The questions that, you know, I have now, based on the information that we were just given, is the county would rather see the one entrance rather than two, you know? So if we, if we do that, how are we going to do it? Number one, we haven't seen a plan on how that would be laid out. Who pays for all of that? I know PNC had some issues with some of the trees and I know Grant, Mr. Radamacher's already said he'll do whatever we want him to do. So I don't think that's a concern. It just, I'd like to see, you know, the layout and the plan of exactly what we're going to do so then we can approve that. But again, I don't think it necessarily needs to go back to PNC to do that. It's just me, from my perspective, it's just, I think we just need, you know, what the final plan is going to look like based on the information we now have in front of us.
Do you, do you see a concern if they were to at least see the information that would be coming back to us? Because if we table it, they're going to have a chance to see it before we do anyway. If they were to at least comment on it?
Yeah.
I know that was a concern at that meeting that night, that the people felt that they didn't have enough information. Even the fact that our photos were probably inadequate for proper discussion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any issue with them commenting on it. Again, based on Councilman Bettinger's comments too, they did already vote on it and did pass it to us. So they've, they've voted to pass it on to us. As far as them commenting on it and what, based on the information we have now, I don't have any issue with that. Do I think they need to vote on it again? No.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I, you know, he's asking for a conditional use permit for the fuel station and a conditional use permit for the deviation from the required five-foot parking lot setback. I think that can be approved. And we, he could come back to the PNC and to the council with a landscape plan and fine-tune the plans for how that, our driveways are going to connect and whatever. And them details can be worked out at a later date. But as conditional use permits, I think we could move forward with it this time. And the rest of the information can come back through the process to the PNC and to the city council. That way the project can keep moving forward. Otherwise, it's totally unlimbo.
Well, I don't know if it's unlimbo. He's just looking for details.
Well, it's kind of hard for him to proceed further into the project when he's going to need these things approved for him to keep spending more money on design and stuff. At least, if I was a business person, I would want that before I...
Mr. Mayor.
Sheen.
I would just offer one other piece of information. As I understand it, the applicant currently has three parcels. And in order to actually move forward with the construction, he would have to combine those parcels such that he meets the setbacks. And just that, that request alone, my understanding would have to go in front of, well, I guess, generally, I kind of lost my train of thought. Generally, lot combinations may not require local action. I guess that would be better.
Does that got to go before the county?
Yeah.
The law order was papers filed, was counted.
Mr. Mayor, disregard our last comment.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Angel.
Concern I have is giving approval to the conditional use permits when we don't know what is going to be entailed in closing this driveway, moving this, combining it with the neighbors, the trees. And I would like to see PNC see that. I, you know, we don't know costs. We don't know how those costs are going to be shared. It could be quite an expense for the city that we've not budgeted for. And, you know, the drainage of, between our drainage and the county's drainage, what is the best way to handle that? And when the PNC's, when the PNC had the public hearing and discussed it, there was this whole piece that wasn't discussed. And I think that's a big portion of it. The work on his prop, on the Radamacher property is contained to his property. But this, this piece of it encompasses the city property. And I think PNC should have, take a look at that, weigh in on it.
All right. So we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
I guess, you know, I think, I think we're, we want this to go through, but I think what's, what do we need to, what do we need to go forward? The big question is, how does the entrance affect the connection between the city property and the new entrance? And there were comments made by our engineer about water issues and drainage where we're just using drain tile and not having a go-forward. Here's, here's the idea, or here's a proposal for how we, for how we take care of the drainage issue and plan the new entry. I think those are the big, the big concerns and questions that kind of need to be answered. Whether that affects how the granting of the conditional use permit so that Mr. Radamacher can move forward, I don't know.
All right, so the motion is to table, was it?
Mm-hmm.
And were you going to ask the PNC to comment? Am I not asking for another public hearing?
I'm not. I wasn't asking for another...
Review the additional information and add additional comments for our discussion and deliberation and vote for next meeting. All right? Mr. Radamacher, it's unusual, but we'll...
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I ask a couple of questions? Can I get some direction at this point? Is the retaining wall going to be a requirement? I know that was brought up, I think, in one of our last discussions. We had planned not to have a retaining wall strictly as a cost benefit to us. I don't want to fund it. I think it's expensive. It's a trip hazard for the kids, all those kinds of things. If I could get some direction, as I tried to define our costs, the retaining wall is going to be expensive. If we can give me some direction that if we can prevent going in that direction, that would be, allow me to get a more definitive number on the grading and some of those things. I can submit a landscaping plan to this, but that's neither here nor there. We're not going to, we had before 4th of July or even later July at this point. So I don't mind waiting. At this point, we want to do it the right way. That storm ring, that is going to be an expense to someone. Now, if we can't, if we can determine, I guess, that we're going to cost sharing on that, or is the city going to mandate concrete pipe, or how deep is it at, you know? Those construction issues, I guess, would be some of the direction that I would appreciate. Is it going to be lumped on us because we're requesting the improvements? Or is the city going to have some cost sharing on that? Giving me some direction would be helpful at this point so at least I can either, A, get better cost define or change my plans altogether to look into replacement of those drain tiles. That'll affect some of our decisions to move forward.
I think that that's probably one of the reasons that, because we just got this information yesterday afternoon from the county. It was the end of last week, we got the information that we have catch basins and drain tiles. The plan is submitted to the PNC, had a ribbon curbing running down to what we thought was drainage. Probably isn't sufficient to take the drainage off a road like that. So I think that's part of the question that we would have as a council and probably the planning and zoning when they said they didn't have enough information, some of them. In discussion with the engineer, there was a question about continuing a small retaining wall like that. Now, could that same purpose be accomplished with appropriate curbing so the water is directed where it's intended to be? I think one of the concerns with the ribbon... I think one of the concerns with the ribbon curbing was how much grading would have to be done on the park property. And with the additional information we got from the engineer, how much of that park already settles to that area, to those drain tiles? So I think that's really an unknown at this time. I guess I would impose upon the engineer at this point to help guide us there because again, in conversation, off the top of his head, he thought maybe the retaining wall is a good idea. As you say, it's a trip hazard. Can we do the same thing with the curb? So I don't know, Shane, if you have any insight on that or would care to share it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can speak to that. The curb, I do not believe would have the same purpose as the retaining wall. Also mentioned in the county review letter is the site distance limitation because of existing trees. Really, that first row of, I don't know if it's six or eight trees, those appear to be, well, I guess it's actually, thinking back now, it's 14 trees on city property. There are actually quite a few, most of the trees are actually on the applicant's property. So either way, I think most of the trees are going to be removed with his project and then at least half of the pine trees would have to be removed anyways to provide adequate site distance. So really, I don't know at this point if, you know, the retaining wall, possibly we could save, you know, maybe half of the trees on the city property. But it does have some drawbacks as Mr. Rodamacher stated with, you know, it's just a vehicle drives off that retaining wall or something to that effect.
So the retaining wall is actually raised, the one that's there right now on the city side, the fence side of it, the earth is up to the top of the retaining wall heading down into the park. So that's flush on that side, but it's coming from the park to the driveway. You'd have a drop off of one to three feet or whatever it would be.
Right. The driveway would actually be at a higher elevation.
The driveway would be higher than retaining wall?
That's correct. The driveway would be higher than the adjacent city property, which would necessitate the retaining wall. Or allow, if the city were open to allow the grading onto the city property. And I think that's the direction that Mr. Rodamacher is asking for tonight. And we could come back to the council and provide some better information. You know, I also noted in the county review letter that a turn lane is required, but the, you know, the wording for the removal of the access points, you know, they use the phrase, "if possible," and we recommend that the access points be consolidated. I would agree with that. I mean, everything that, you know, all traffic engineers will tell you that that many access locations and that short of a distance just cause for increased accidents. But if I'm reading correctly, it doesn't, it's not a requirement of this plan. And so I had a short conversation with Mr. Rodamacher. I called him a little bit earlier today and at that time, his preference was to not connect the driveway to his entrance to our parking lot, to the city parking lot, if it meant a bunch of additional costs and was not going to be a requirement. So from my perspective, if it's not a requirement, but yet we would still like to see it done, maybe the city should consider some cost sharing options, you know, just so we can accomplish that connection that we've been planning for the past about 15 years or so.
The turn lane, how far back does that go from where the new driveway is proposed? How far north?
The turn lane is not designed yet.
I mean, how long is a turn lane typically?
At least 300 feet.
So that would...
Plus a taper.
Plus a taper. But the tapers, we only have to widen out another foot and a half to two feet, so...
But that south driveway in this parking lot would be in the middle of a turn lane.
That's correct.
Which is, I don't know that I've ever seen that done. I mean, that'd be pretty dangerous if somebody's looking at turning and somebody's looking at pulling out. I mean, is it...
Right. I do think that a safer location would be on the entrance road. You know, and the other tough part for the council is that this time, we don't have any cost of how much this connection, you know, from the park parking lot to the entrance road would be or how much it would be to upgrade the storm sewer pipe to allow vehicle traffic.
So if the driveway were to go in as proposed and there were no retaining wall, then you, the proposal would be to grade from the driveway or from the curbing...
Down.
...level that out towards the drainage area.
Right.
Which would, in effect, eliminate all the trees.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Also, looking at the letter from Monocca County Highway Division, they are stating we need to submit calculations to run up and such, and drainage calculations, grading and erosion control plans, right turn lane construction plans, the ACHD design requirements checklist for county highway modifications. So those things are required unless I misunderstood you, Randy. I thought you said that normally isn't done until during the project. I read this that that needs to be done prior to the project taking place. So I don't know. Shane, if you...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
It typically happens after the project's been approved, but the final design hasn't done. It's got the final design, the total thing hasn't been designed yet, so the county can't review drainage calculations if you don't have a design. And he can't design it if you don't give him his conditional use permit for parking lot setback, his conditional use permit for the island. All them things come into play. And like he said, he needs a decision on the retaining wall. He's, you know, all them things come into play. And so until them are, decisions are made, you really can't decide how much water is going to be, the county isn't going to want any more water running out to the county right away.
Right.
So, and that's what they're going to be looking for. And that's different than what Shane's got me looking for. But typically them are, give to the county after the project's been approved, but before we allow them to start construction in the county right away. They have to submit them calculations and their designs to Monocca County for review. And our design team will look at it, review them and approve them, and then we'll give them a permit to do their work in a right away. Now, as far as, you know, the two driveways being combined together or hooking up the Rodamacher service road, if that doesn't all happen right away, I'm sure the county would be acceptable to that as long as we, you know, because we don't have the funds to do it. As long as we would agree to do it when money's become available to connect that service road. I mean, like Shane says, it's a much safer condition and it was agreed upon 15 years ago that that's what should happen for this commercial area, so...
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Does that, Mr. Rodamacher, does that help? Does that give you what you're looking for?
No. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I guess I feel like the city supports us on the project and Mr. Ray knows, I understand your quandary, but you're right. We don't get the permit to do the work, but until I get approval that we can do it, I don't want to spend the money on the engineering and the plans and the calculations, but until the county actually gives us that right of a permit, we can't do anything. But I guess to answer your question, I'm going to go price everything and then I'll look at, I guess I'll actually look at prices for storm sewer along the road, turning the ditch, you know, and putting, getting rid of the ribbon curbs. We've got a lot of that stuff priced already as kind of option A, B, C, and D. It's just that every one of those options is a significant price tag to add on to the price list. And then, of course, at some point, it becomes not economical. We can improve the islands that we've got and move on. And that's not a threat. We just have to, you know, when I do the plans, I try to make it, what's going to work economically for the city and for us? I do think joining these together would be great, but I assume that was concrete pipe out there. For me to have to replace, what do you call that pipe?
Drain tile.
Drain tile. If I get stuck having to replace that myself, I don't know. It's not hurting my budget, I guess, and I don't want to spend that. So that was my comments to Shane is if that's a $30,000 price tag, why am I getting charged for that just because I don't want to improve the roadway? But I'll do the work, you know? I'll get some price tags assigned. I'll turn some over to Liz and we'll see where we shake out when it's all said and done. We're not going to make it holidays anyway, so we're not voting. So I'll do some more homework, Mr. Congressman Brian, and I'll see you next month. I hope I don't have to go back to PNC. I hope we're not doing this in September because then I'm done with the poll. So hopefully we can exit at a...
I would speculate on behalf of the council that definitely won't happen. All right, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Will you repeat the motion? Laurie, can we oppose upon you to read back the motion?
Councilmember Brian made a motion to table until all the information from the county is available and PNC has time to review. Second and I reiterate.
Can I just get clarification that PNC is not going to vote again? They're just going to comment?
There'll be no public hearing and they are simply commenting at this point.
No public hearing, more time to comment.
And I would, I guess I'd like clarification too because what I heard you say is until all the information's in from, that's to be in from the county, it doesn't sound like that's going to happen. So, but until additional information, it sounds like what Mr. Rodamacher will have some and there'll be some information now that Shane's seen the county documents. So I think there's additional information they can comment on, but it gives us a chance to walk through it and take a look at some of the cost options too because, again, from the standpoint of the city, if we're committing to it, we need to know what we might be stepping into, so. It's in the same way Mr. Rodamacher needs to know what he's stepping into, we need to know what we're getting into here, so. And I understand, you know, some of the planning and zoning commissioners wanted to keep all the trees. That may not be an option, but there will be replacements.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
You know, and again, based on retaining walls, that, again, I think they're a huge cost to run a retaining wall that length. So I don't, I'm not opposed to letting, you know, again, if Shane agrees and drainage is adequate for the grading to go on property, on the park property, but if we do that, then I, and I think Mr. Rodamacher has agreed that he'd put some trees in there to kind of, as many as we can without, you know, limiting the sightlines. And I think that's kind, would be kind of somewhat of a compromise from that aspect.
Well, yeah, I think the trees, you know, obviously have to be out of the sightlines for the intersection there, both for our driveway going out into the road and the road going out onto County 5. So that's no question. The trees will be somewhere else. I think just the idea, is it graded so that the driveway runs south or north? And if it runs north, somebody has to do something because the drain tiles won't keep up. So I think we can at least have time to have that discussion between the engineer and the planner and Mr. Rodamacher can take a look at his options and then I think we have a more fruitful discussion and make more sense of both of our dollars. So at this point, the motion is to, as understood, is to allow the additional information to pass through PNC again for their comments and to come back to the July meeting and give Mr. Rodamacher a final answer.
Mr. Mayor.
Is that the way I understand it?
Yes, but I think we need to amend it to take out the required documents requested by the county be provided to the planning and zoning.
The additional information that can be made available by PNC.
Right, yes. Because we're not going to have everything and it sounds like we, not, everything is required.
No, but, but again, people now have public information and they can ask questions and make comments accordingly. And again, if we want our commissioners to be part of the process, they can at least give us their opinions as we make our decisions. All right? So with that being the understood motion, then we will take action in July. Additional information being available to us? I'm sorry. The information will be provided to the PNC and comments will be brought back to our July meeting. That's understood by the motioner and the secondary?
Yes.
All right, with that being the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
For item C, the fee schedule ordinance 2017-02, we had some discussion at the workshop as to how to word on page by letter F. And I would move the verbiage to read, "No rental for residents over the age of 52, no rental charge for..."
Fifty-two?
Fifty-two. Apologize.
Fifty or sixty-two?
Sixty-two. I'm reading sixty-two. I'm saying fifty-two. I apologize. "No rental charge for residents over the age of 52, funerals for family of residents, government groups, state, county, city, census-related precinct caucuses, and independent nonprofit groups active within the city and whose focus is providing services or events to the residents." Write that up for the second.
Other than you said fifty-two again, say sixty-two.
I apologize.
I'll second that if it's sixty-two.
It is. I have sixty-two written down. I apologize. I don't know why I'm doing that.
All right, the motion, the second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Is that approved, the whole thing with that?
With that correction, yes.
And is that with the other corrections as highlighted?
Correct.
At the workshop, the 24A and 262?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Brian.
I'd make a motion to have the Planning and Zoning Commission review the subdivision ordinance to determine how minor subdivisions can be processed administratively rather than proceeding through the Planning and Zoning Commission review, recommendation, and city council approval. The recommendation shall identify the parameters for such action and identify what will trigger the mandatory review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council. And to assist the planning and zoning, I would like the memo file 122.03 to be forwarded to the commission members.
Second that.
Motion, the second, discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'd like to make a motion to table discussion regarding Mr. Tony Elfelt pending his potential application for an IUP.
Second that.
Motion, the second, discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Brian.
I'd like to make a motion to request a work session to determine the assessment guidelines for the city using information provided by the city engineer who has proposed three different types of projects, of which projects can, could require different ratio for financing. Those three projects would be Old Viking, Ebony, and Garnet in Rogers Lake area.
Second that.
Motion, the second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I think one of the challenges I'm having right now, understanding we want to move ahead, but questioning the, what's the right percentage? Do we include direct or indirect access? There are several conditions based on the 429 policy regarding green acres and seniors, et cetera. I think we just need to take more time to work through that so that we can move forward and have some direction as a council to work on our roads.
Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Cory provided us with the piece that she had sent out a while back. I appreciate that. You know, if there's additional, excuse me, additional information, we could ask to have staff prepare prior to a special meeting so that we have as much in front of us as possible. I was thinking of looking at other towns that are similar to us in size, types of roads we have, what is their, what are their policies?
I'd ask Shane, I would imagine you do this on a regular basis, probably fairly often for townships. Is there pool of information that would be helpful for background? You know, I know Attorney Rupi has quite often referred to statute 429 as a starting point, and we have some of that from the pack we got from Cory. point, and we have some of that from the pack we got from Cory, but is there additional things that you or city staff could research in preparation for a, a special meeting to address this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, as, as we previously discussed regarding percentages and that type of thing, it really, it varies so much. I mean, some cities assess just a minimum of 20%, such that they can bond for the projects, that's a requirement in order to bond for the projects. Some cities have franchise fees and totally fund their capital improvement plan, and their, you know, some of the smaller townships are still requiring 100% assessment, so there really is, you know, one spectrum to the other.
Well, the franchise fees, when that was proposed down in Ramsey, did they proceed with that or did that go through?
I believe Ramsey proceeded with it as a partial funding mechanism and still have the ability to assess a portion of it, such that they can bond, as kind of a, a financial tool.
But the 20% is the minimum participation in order to bond?
Right, they're also, Ramsey is also a charter city, and so they have a charter, and that has some provisions for special assessment projects. Some additional that, that now that we're not have, that it's not a charter city.
But, but at this point, because we have no common utility that necessarily would help us with the franchise fees, is that something, is even feasible in now then?
I, I haven't researched it specifically for now then, I think it would be feasible, however, you know, it's essentially the same thing as, as raising your, your levy. The homeowners or the residents are paying, essentially your utility companies that operate within the city, pay the city a franchise fee for the use of your public right-of-way, and the, the logic or the theory is, is that, you know, since these utilities are using our right-of-way to sell their services, it's only fair that they help fund the road improvement projects, but ultimately, at the end, it's, it's the same people, you know, the same residents that fund that program. So it is, I think the advantage of a franchise fee is it's dedicated, and, you know, it's a dedicated funding source that can't be maybe directed to other budgetary needs within the city. But other than that, I mean, the, the, the franchise fee that you impose on a utility company, they directly pass those onto the end user as a monthly charge.
And, and do they get to collect anything for collecting that fee?
You know, I imagine, imagine they, they could charge some administrative cost, but I don't know the answer for that definitively.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettej.
No matter how you fund it, whether it's through franchise fees, it's still a tax. It's still a tax, so, yeah, I mean, and that's why I think we need to have a feasibility study done, have Shane put the numbers together. We could pick a percentage, and I've drawn it around Thursday night, 50/50. Let's look at them numbers with the residents on it, let's see, how does that work out? What does that look like? Does that look like something that we think the residents could handle and something that the city could handle, and as a, as a starting point? And I think that's, sooner or later, that's what you gotta do, you gotta just, here's what we're gonna do, and see how the residents perceive that, or do they like it, or I, I would assume they would. There's gonna be some people that nobody wants to pay any more tax, but paying 50% is a lot better than paying 100%, and, and the road's needed, something needs to be done. But if we have actual numbers, if we have a feasibility study, then we got numbers, and we, then we, he also goes out there, we know how many people live right on the road that are using, have direct access, it's gotta be direct access, it's the only real benefit. It's always been per unit. And if we, if we have them do a feasibility study using them numbers, then at least we have something for that workshop to look at and say, hey.
Well, I, I think it begs that discussion though, you say it's per unit, okay, if somebody's got a 40 or 80 on that road, and somebody's got, and the grandfathered in one acre lots on that road, you're saying it's the same thing, and then the guy with the 40 decides he's gonna develop, and he's got eight units there now, or that are coming out onto that road. I think it, it begs at least some discussion before we, we establish a policy, because I think once we establish that policy, that's gonna keep coming back, people are gonna say, well, that's what you established. So I do think it takes some additional consideration, you say it's gotta be direct access, but I'm thinking up here on, on Old Viking, there's a couple of places where you, you can't go south without having to go on Old Viking. You could maybe drive all the way north to, to 24 and come back around and avoid it through Cleary or somewhere else, but to, but to get reasonably out of your home, and I think we need to be able to explore, if you're on Old Viking, you're gonna get this percentage, you know, if it's 50%, you're gonna get the full 50%. If you're off of that, you're gonna get 10% or, you know, something else, or if you've got a, an unbuildable lot, nobody's ever gonna build on it, you're not gonna get anything. But I think, I think we at least, at least need to have that discussion so that when we set policy, we don't find out later we were short-sighted and, and what we did to just get a feasibility study on one road doesn't really apply. I think Shane's comment last Thursday that if you take a look at three types of road, you've got something that, that's going to be potentially a state aid road on Old Viking, and you've got Rogers Lake area, which is never gonna be a state aid road, and you've got something that looks like a total rebuild, like Ebony and Garnet. You know, what, does that make more sense to say, here's the type of thing we're gonna see throughout the city, rather than taking one that could be state aid in who knows how many years? And not comparing it so we know. You know, Rogers Lake, you've got all smaller parcels compared to some of the, the other properties where it's gonna be different. So I think that it would help us get, get the background to establish a better policy, and looking at Shane's email, that really that's what he needs, he needs the city policy to go forward and say, what is the criteria you're gonna use? What, what are the policies that you, you've established, so he knows how to project into that? So I think there's some work we need to do, and I think it makes sense to have, we've talked about this for a long time, having a special meeting for the purposes of ironing that out, and I would suggest that we pick the engineer's brain and, and the attorney's brain on, on that matter, because they deal with it all the time, from the engineering standpoint and from the legal standpoint of what you can charge and how you're likely to be challenged in court. You know, establish good policies, you can minimize your losses in court. So I think it makes sense to, to get it all on the table. Now, maybe it's straightforward for you, you've worked in the highway department for all these years, but for the residents that haven't had anything like this thrust upon them in the past, I think we need to make sure we understand it well and go forward, and it's been something that's been needed for a long time. So I think a, a special meeting to that effect and getting the education benefit of people that do it on a regular basis and establish a procedure and a policy would make sense. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettej.
You threw out, for example, 50% that residents that are right on Viking would pay, well, the other 50% that's being paid by the city, that's because other people used that road, that's why the city would be coughing up 50%.
I understand that, I'm, I'm just saying that...
And in the past, larger lots, like 40s, we have done deferred assessments, like the Jasper 185th, we've done deferred assessments, so if they come in, if they decide to develop after we've upgraded that street, then they had to pay a deferred assessment on that, and you can do that, but from my understanding, staff here didn't really care for that because...
They did not.
Because you have to, anytime somebody sells a lot or does it, then they gotta go and prorate it and figure it all out, and it's a lot of work for them, but, I mean, that's a way of handling that, and we, we have done it that way in the past. In the past, we've always 100% assessed.
And, and, and I understand that, but you're saying that's something that has been done, but we don't have a policy. And, and what I'm saying is it makes sense to me, get together and establish an actual policy, rather than saying, well, there's some things we've done in the past, and admit staff didn't like it because there were some drawbacks, maybe just for them or maybe for the developer, let's hear what that is and, and establishing a policy so people coming in and looking to develop, no, that's the policy now then, you're gonna develop, here's how assessments are gonna be handled. And, and I was saying that, again, I don't know enough, but maybe if we're saying that, if you're assessing everybody who's directly on the road improvement, and again, understanding the 429 benefit criteria, we may not be able to assess 50% because it's pretty hard, you know, it's, it's relatively easy to say, if you're going from a gravel road to a block top road, the value of the home is going to increase, and we can get an assessor to, to verify that. But it's a little harder to say, you're on a block top road, it used to be a county road, and we're just gonna overlay it, and that cost, 50% of that cost can go against you if that's more than benefits their property. So I think that maybe it's not 50%, but the 50% that would go to the residents, a portion would go to those that are directly on the road, a portion would go to those that have to access that road on a regular basis, and the balance would be by the residents of the city who also generally use that road or could use that road. But I think the cri, the critical thing is to establish a policy so developers and homeowners and future councilmembers all have an idea of what we were intending on doing before we did it. And, and so I think that's valuable. Again, with people that do it on a regular basis can say, here's some of the things we've learned, good and bad, and we can certainly bring in, here's what the township has done previously, here's what other communities have done, and we can take a look at, you know, a sample of, of the type of roads that, we could have specific discussions, what would be a direct benefit, what would be an indirect benefit, and what would be of no benefit. So, that being said, the motion is to call a special meeting to discuss that and establish a policy, so we can then feed the information to the engineer to come up with a reasonable feasibility study on whether it's that road or the three road, three sample roads we talked about. All right, who's second?
I did.
All right, so with that being the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move consent agenda items 1.1 through 1.10.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor. Under council item number seven, letter A, accept or reject the bids for the recycling center addition, I move that the council reject all bids and direct the city clerk to notify, annul the county, we are unable to accept the grant based on the dollar amount of the bids received.
And the motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The bids, the first bid we came, we received is more than what the grant is and the additional that we thought we would put in, it was not a complete bid, and I don't remember if that was gentleman's name for the...
No, it did not, yes, ma'am?
Right.
Did not.
He did not. The second bid is way over our capability.
It's thorough.
It's very thorough, yes, but it's way over our capabilities. What I'd like to do is see us concentrate on small improvements to the recycling center and would ask, I'll ask staff in a second, and a motion after this, that they would bring forward any suggestions they have for improvements to the recycle center, we've asked that in the past, and we can look at that again.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettej.
I have a question for Councilmember Rainville, what was the budget, wasn't it 80,000 originally for the whole project, between the county grant and our recycling funds that the city was gonna spend on the project?
I apologize, I don't have that dollar amount with me, I, I don't remember, I apologize.
Lori?
I don't know if it's here, but that sounds right, I don't have the information either.
Okay, yeah, I thought I had it in my packet with me. I can, I will find that out.
And if that was the case, we could move forward with the, the building and, and get bid to fence separately and the house to be in within our 80,000 dollar funds.
My pleasure, I thought I had it in my packet with me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Yeah, based, based on the bids that we've seen, obviously, it, we, it's easy to see that we can't do the entire scope of the project, so instead of not doing anything, I would like to, if we can, see us do, you know, do it in phases and get, you know, get as much of what we have figured out or budgeted for and done, and then, you know, maybe we hold off on doing the fenced area till next year or the following year, but again, I would hate for us to just not do anything, being that we have grant money that is there accessible along with money that we have kinda set aside and budgeted for.
Councilmember Rickert, I understand your thoughts. My concern I have with the first bid is that that party did not come out for the bid meeting, and that was requirement of submitting a bid, and he, per Andy's memo, he also does not have, what would he call that?
Geotechnical soil testing.
Yes, and that was not included in that. So it's not a true complete bid.
The other one, though, was much more expensive, by bidding the fence and the building was a $25, $2400 savings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
If I may, in the April packet, the grant application, the grant requested was $50,000 for the total project cost of $80,000, Councilmember Rainville, is that?
That didn't sound familiar, yes.
So the grant was 50 and the city puts in 30?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Though, again, the bid that, the low bid that came in did not adhere to the requirement of submitting a bid, and that concerns me with how you can bid something without coming out and looking at it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Everybody has supplied plans, you, I guess from my perspective, if you have the plans in front of you, you should be able to bid what, you know, what the project is. You don't necessarily, you know, I guarantee you, not all builders go look at every site prior to bidding on a, on a job. If I get a set of plans in front of me, I should be able to bid on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettej.
so which would put us a hair over budget, but we'd have a nice building when we get done. I'd hate to see us lose that $50,000 over grant.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
15% over would be about another $10,000, if my rough math is right, so that would put us $5,000 over budget.
$6,052.
Mr. Mayor?
Not bad.
Councilmember Rainville?
The other concern I have is the ability of staff to provide the maintenance for the addition, the additional products that are going to be accepted based on a full service. I know Joel has stated at times it's hard to get things done. The times I've gone over to the recycle center in the last month or so, it, to me, does not look like it's being properly maintained, and I have a concern about adding additional workload for those new products, that we won't be able to handle that without an increase in staff, which we haven't talked about increasing any staff for the recycle center.
What are the terms of the grant?
Believe it, you have, in order to accept that grant, then you have to go to a full-service recycling center.
And the maximum amount in that grant is 50,000?
Yes.
And is there a requirement, a matching requirement, or a...
No.
Why is the city putting in $30,000?
Based on projected cost of the project, we knew it wouldn't be 50, and that was borne out last year with the price of the bids that came in, and again, this year. So we would take some of the existing recycle budget and put that towards it.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger.
Councilmember Rainville, is the grant application just that one page document that was needed to be submitted to sue?
No, it was a, there were numerous pages to it. I don't think, Corey didn't put, I believe Corey put the entire, the entire proposal into the packet.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger.
As far as the labor to run the recycling center, that's totally run on monies that come from the county for recycling, so it doesn't cost the city any tax dollars whatsoever to run that recycling center. And that's where the $30,000 is coming too, it's from the county from recycling funds. So we can get this $80,000 improvement to our recycling center, so we can provide a bigger and better service to our residents and recycle it more. And we've had extra funds, so if we do need extra staff time spent over there, the money's there.
I don't think that's the question, the money's there. It's, you know, when we had our recycle day this year, we questioned how well the sweeper that we bought last year with the funds we had was working, and we were told it hadn't been used yet, because there was confusion over to who had keys to it and how to run it. So to our understanding, the first time it ran was recycling day a couple weeks ago. And it wasn't for lack of money, we obviously bought the machine, and we obviously have $30,000 there to pay people to staff, but I think it's the availability of staff to do that. We have some coverage on weekends, I'm not sure how consistent, talking with our staff, how consistent that coverage is, and I don't know what, how consistent the county is, because nobody's really monitoring that. And so what I heard the councilmembers say was, you know, it would maybe separate from the grant, but maybe before we can be a full-service recycling center, we need to take care of what we've got. And right now, it's generally a mess, real inconsistencies with how it's maintained. And if we were to take on additional materials, especially carpeting and siding and mattresses, there would be additional cost, which generally has been borne by the county, because we haven't maximized anything yet, but there has to be the maintenance of it. And right now, we're not, for whatever reason, not to impugn anybody, but we're not maintaining what we do have. If we bring on larger, heavier items, what's the proposal on the part of staff to handle that? Do we need an additional person to be able to staff a full-service recycling center? So I think there's two issues here. One is the opportunity to pursue this grant, and if the only reason, the only way we can get this grant is becoming a full-cycle recycle, full-service recycling center, then how do we become a full-service recycling center, rather than just building a building? Because to maintain that grant, we have to provide the services. Can we provide the services? We haven't even, we, to my knowledge, we've never used the container that we bought previously, and it's still sitting over in the maintenance yard, and I don't know if we've ever put anything in it. So having a bigger building doesn't mean we are now a full-service recycling center. I don't want to pass up, there's not, no such thing as free money, but when the county has money to offer us, I certainly want to grow into a full-service recycling center. But I think that includes staffing it, and right now, we haven't proved we can do that. And if there's $30,000 there that the city could put in from the county for recycling purposes, I think there's a number of things we could do to prove that we can handle what we currently have, and then get ready for an actual addition. Let's go into the plan, and it's, we're coming into the budget cycle starting next week, a great time to talk about what do we want to do to staff that so it's appropriately maintained.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rickert.
The issue that I have is, if this was a concern, why, why was that concern not brought up before we even applied for this grant? We've been talking about this for how long, we applied for the grant, and now it's a concern.
It's a concern for me.
That's what bothers me, and I wasn't finished.
Okay.
And the thing that bothers me is the fact that we've gone through all these steps and jumped through these hoops, and now we've gotten these funds sitting in front of us, and now somebody brings up a concern that we can't do what we did all this legwork on to get the funds, because of why? Those things should be brought up from the very beginning, and then that way we don't spend the time, you know, wasting the county's time, our time, applying for these grants. We didn't think that we couldn't handle the addition, we knew going in, when we applied for that grant, what it would require to apply and get that grant. If the concern was there then, it should have been brought up then, and then we could have addressed it, figured out how to do it, and we could have at that time determined, okay, is this something we really want to do? Should we really be applying for this grant at this time? But now we got the grant, the money's sitting there, and now we're coming back and saying, you know what, I really don't think we can do it. To me, that makes us look like a bunch of idiots, and to the county and everybody else.
It's become a concern on my part only recently, because of my, you know, when we were up there at recycling day, and subsequent visits on my part, you know, being aware of how we found it on recycling day, and bringing up my own recycling in the last couple of weeks, caused me to go to Joe and say, how are we doing this? Because it doesn't appear like we're able to maintain it. And his comments, work that we can. We count on Don on the weekends, and the weekend I was in there, it didn't appear that we got much done out of it, if anything. And I asked him, how are we monitoring whether the county's showing up or not? He says, we're not. We get over there when we see it's getting really bad, when we're not busy. So that was the first that came to my attention, because he never brought up the fact that if you bring in more, we can't handle it. His comment in recent weeks to me was, we can't handle what we got. And so that's the first evidence. I think when the grant came up and the application timeframe, you know, we had to make provision because the time, the window for that was between council meetings, so we didn't have a lot of time to discuss it. We thought, basically, based on previous year, where we thought we had a grant opportunity, but we didn't have the money for it, that we probably didn't ask these questions. How are we going to handle that much more stuff? But seeing how we're handling it, it raised questions in my mind that I didn't have before. And maybe, you know, in winter time, I don't go up there as much. My other concern is the significant discrepancy between the two bids. I mean, the one with a Gantt chart and a federal proposal and a geotechnical soil test, and unfortunately, because they were more thorough, they are a lot more expensive. I don't know anything personally about the other bid, other than they didn't follow through on what was requested for the bid. That being said, you know, there were three other people contacting, we don't have anything from them, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rickert.
I guess, what is a timetable through the county to either accept or use the funds?
I would, to Councilmember Rickert, I'd have to look back at the, which I do not have with me.
Because again, I, you know, it's basically a two-thirds to one-third cost comparison, county money compared to city money, and it's, I just would hate to see us squander that away. If, you know, if we have the time to get some provision or something in place where we feel more confident, you know, I'm up there quite a bit, or in that general area quite a bit, and you know, the people who the county bring up are usually guys from the workhouse. Are they monitored? No, never, no. So is there a way to work better with the county to know exactly what hours they're going to be there and have staff there to, you know, have them monitor and give, you know, work instruction to? You know, I've seen several times the guy who, the guard, or whatever you want to call him, who drives the shuttle, him being on the other side of the station, you smoke a cigarette, I'm all, you know, over, I've even seen him sitting on two recliners in there smoking cigarettes, so it's...
Yeah, there was a question that was brought up to me, when the complaint was the television wasn't working right, and I'm like, okay, on weekends or with the county, are we really paying people to watch television? Do I have to get a new television because it wasn't working right? And I, you know, when I'm around during the day, and I stop in when I see the county van, and I always seem to catch them on break. But generally, when they're done, the cardboard's done up, and I mean, at least the majority of stuff is there. I think it begs, you know, maybe not at this time, but after my discussion with Joe and seeing what, the other day, one of the containers was completely filled with aluminum, and Joe informed me that Don doesn't move the aluminum down here anymore. Okay, well, that's probably one of the bigger problems we used to have, is you don't want the county doing it, because tin cans get in there, if they find any tin cans, we get tin prices on the aluminum. Don was really good about sorting through it, going through the magnet, making sure, only he was bringing it down here. So some things happen that we're not getting the same response from, you know, maybe from Don, but certainly from the county. And Joe indicated it's not his job to supervise that. So we need to have some understanding from staff, who is making sure that those are happening. It was always Debbie. But anyway, so to the point of what's the window before the grant closes, if we were to not accept these bids, is there still an opportunity to pursue the grant? We don't have that information right now.
I do not have that, no. I thought I had that whole packet with me, and I apologize. Just trying to see if I can find it in my outgoing.
So one opportunity would be to change the motion to table the acceptance of this bid until we get more information from the county.
Mr. Mayor?
That way we don't lose the opportunity here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would be willing to amend my motion to table it until we give, I can provide the additional information. I mean, to Councilmember Rickert's comment about why did we not know before, I, you know, I have, just in the last couple months, come up here and have looked more so at the recycle center and see that it's not being maintained, and I think that we need to have a policy or have a procedure in place that states whose responsibility is it to maintain the recycle center? And again, to take on additional work, when our staff is having difficulty getting work done that they have already assigned to them, I don't think is a smart move. I mean, it is nice money from the county, I would only hope that next year they continue to have money, they have for years now had additional ability to grant grants, and hopefully that would continue. When you talk to the recycle coordinator, they're, I'm not saying flush with money, but they do have good money, and so hopefully we could do something later on. But I just think that right now, we're going to bite off more than we can chew, and that doesn't look good to the residents when they come in to use the building, and it's not fair to staff to ask them to increase their workload with the existing numbers that they have.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger.
Normally in the spring, it's, the stuff dropped off, there's heavier, everybody after all winter decides to clean their garage, so you get May and June here, so everybody's cleaning their garage and bringing the stuff down here and dumping it off, so there's more material this time of the year. Steve is back in town, that used to work as a temp for the city, and so Joe does have more help available that, somebody could be put in the recycling center when heated to help catch up and clean that place up.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
The issue I would have with that, Councilmember Bettinger, is Steve left us last year saying he'd be back, then drew unemployment and said he wasn't coming back. So I would not want to count on someone that has done that to us in the past. I know that he was a good employee and did good work, but I would hesitate putting, you know, going that route.
I think, to the point is, you know, you were talking about policy and procedure, you know, what is the standard? And I think that that's one of the challenges we have with the small staff that we have and the council members and our go-rounds in the past about micromanaging and stepping on each other's toes. But I do think that at some point, we need to define who is responsible for the standards of maintenance. We were down at the park this last weekend, and every parking spot was filled. They were parking along the driveways. And I don't know where they're all coming from. I'm guessing a lot of them are not Southern residents. The beach was packed, the fishing pier was packed. We don't have our ropes and buoys out this year. We've got a swimming area that says, don't go beyond the ropes, but there's no ropes. The, it was a weekend, and the grass had been cut and had been blown into the volleyball court. The rope is, was strung through the net instead of around the edge of the court. And all the way near the concession stand, the sidewalks were covered with weeds and grass. Now, when I talked to Joe about it, it was like, I don't have enough staff to do all that. But at what point do we say the recycling center's quality of maintenance should be this? And the park quality of maintenance should be this? You know, our agreement with the softball team was to cut the field. Well, if you noticed it recently, it's now been cut, but it got out of hand there. And we had to come back, and it was a lot of grass laying on there. So who's expected to monitor that? And so to your point, I know what it looked like on recycling day back in May. But I'm talking about last weekend. I came in on Monday, Memorial Day, and the cardboard was all the way out to the door. Both plastic bins were filled overflowing, the tires were out to the door stacked. It wasn't necessarily junk, it's normal stuff. It's plastic, cardboard, and tires. And all the garbage that had been brought in, the dumpsters were locked, so it was dumped right inside the one door. And I don't know when our garbage pickup is, but if it was Tuesday, we were going to have empty dumpsters for the garbage man and a bunch of garbage inside. So again, I took it upon myself just to mention it to Joe, not to direct him, but just to let him know what I found. And he took it upon himself to make sure that somebody got over and did something about it. But where do we expect those standards? Because people come into cities and use our parks, and this recycling center is used by people all over. You know, Western Anoka and Eastern Sherburne County. I've met people in there from Zimmerman. The hardware store in St. Francis, this is where they recycle their cardboard. So again, it benefits a lot of people, but how do we maintain it? This is a, going back to, if we are struggling with that, I'd like to know the specifics on the grant before we add burden to that. And I would like to have that be part of the discussion when we have the budget, to have Joe in here, to have Lori in here, to say, if you're going to be coordinating recycling, from the money standpoint, from the building standpoint, what do we need to do budget-wise going forward? And if he says, I can't staff it, then we need to talk about what will we do? Whether it's a seasonal person like Steve, probably not at his driving rate. I don't think we want to pay the same thing for somebody who's driving gravel as we are recycling. But what does that take? And I think having staff input on that, address that. So we can talk about things like cleanliness standards and organizational standards for our buildings and our parks. I know Joe's saying that right now, ditch mowing is becoming overwhelming. When I was up driving old Viking and looking at the road, pulling out on sodium, yeah, you look left, you can't see any traffic coming because the weeds are high. So we have some things that need to be done. Staff's going to have to tell us that, and we have to budget accordingly. But we need to have that taken into consideration, because if our standards are ditch mowing gets done this often, parks are done this way, and we do weed whipping and leaf blowing afterwards. And, you know, if we're going to ma- if we bought a machine for maintaining a recycling center, who uses it and when? I think policy and procedure is important that way, and we should involve staff with those decisions. Separate issue from this grant. But if we are willing to proceed with a motion to get additional information from the county on the window for the grant and table this recycling decision, the bid decision until next month, that's an option.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would amend my motion to say that we table the bids, direct the city clerk to notify the two bidders that we're tabling at this time. And we'll work, if we go forward, we would work with completion dates, work with them. And I will get all the information put together from the county.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, you may have, these contractors, you may have to see if the completion date works anymore or no one. They may have other jobs, they may hold their bids altogether by the end of the year, so.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would like to ask council and staff, make a motion to ask council and staff to provide to me their thoughts on improvements to the recycle center. If I could have a second.
So you're saying you'd like input from council and staff?
Yes.
By when?
Next thirty days.
So that's really a request, except for staff, you're saying? Pretty hard to impose that on council. You're either going to get it or you're not.
Yeah, right.
Staff, you can impose things on, and you're going to get what they can give you.
I'm just, I'm looking for people's suggestions. If we don't move forward with this, what are some other options that we can do within our existing budget? And that would be improvements to the recycle center, whether it's hours, better signage, part-time employees, different containers, any type of things like that, that would, they, either council or staff feel that would be beneficial in trying to operate the recycle center in an easier fashion. You know, it was something that, when we were looking at the grant last year, we talked, I can't remember if it was Councilmember Shuffler that made the mo- made the motion, or if it was the mayor, but to bring forward so that we'd have some ideas as to things that we could do to improve the recycle center that.
Well, I had brought it forward because the year before, when we bought the CAT, that grant came up, it was a kind of a sudden grant, and we took opportunity to buy the tool cat. And I said, if something like that were to come up again in 2016, would we be ready with types of things we would like to do for improvement of the recycling center? Could we put together a list? And then jump on those, should we get a grant or money become available like it did? Because we had money for the building, but it wasn't enough to fund the bid that we got on the expansion. So we wanted to be ready with a list of items that could be done to improve the recycling center if the money was available. And I don't know that I ever saw that list, I know there were some things suggested. We ended up with the sweeper as an opportunity there. And again, I don't think we want the county using that sweeper, but we need to know who is, whether our staff is or if Don on the weekends is. But that, I think, is along the lines of what you're talking about.
Correct.
Have a list of things that we could do with the funds we do have. And depending on what the county says on the fifty thousand dollars, there's still the thirty thousand dollars that we only get if we use. If I understand it right?
Correct.
So that list would be valuable. Like I said, I think you can recommend it to the council. If the council would like to obligate the staff to contribute something, that's up to the council. You want to amend your motion or?
I would amend my motion to direct staff to, within the next thirty days, provide suggestions for improvements to the recycle center with the thought of.
You're going to say facilities and operation?
Yes, facilities and operation.
You want to add equipment to that as well? Equipment, facilities, and operation?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Any feedback would be helpful. I think we might be able to just, with the understanding that we might not get feedback from everyone, but we can certainly take what we can get.
All right. All those in favor of the motion? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
Under Council Item 7B, scheduled budget meetings, per the conversation at the workshop, we hit schedule June 19th, July 17th, and August 21st.
It was August 14th.
I had it on the 21st.
I had it on the 14th.
I have it 14th, too.
I have it on the 21st, it's my anniversary.
Yeah, it is.
Send us a memo on that.
All at 7:00 PM here at the City Hall.
So June 19th, July 17th, and August 14th. 27th at seven o'clock. Okay, we have that motion to formalize those meetings and get them posted.
So it is the 14th, right?
It is the 14th, that's what's on my calendar.
All right, I'll second that motion. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Eight forty-five, we beat it by five minutes.